All right, guys. Well, we thank you guys for coming out tonight. Even when it's bad circumstances, we love to see the community participate so that you know who your elected officials are and some of what we do. So with that being said, I'll call this March 10th, 2020 Chilton County Commission Meeting to Order. And I would ask if everyone is, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? We have no additions or deletions?
Mine's on there, we need to take it off. Cause that'll hold on the action on it. Yeah, we take mine off.
Okay. Ms. Sylvia, would you make a note of the deletion of the storm shelter door locks?
It's being handled.
Anyone else have any, any deletions? Hearing none, could I get a motion to approve the minutes with the deletion?
Uh, the agenda, I make a motion, we approve the agenda with the deletion in addition.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I also failed to make part of the public record that we do have a quorum here. So if y'all will reflect that in, in the meetings for the next minute. Have you guys had an opportunity to review the minutes of the February 25th meeting? And if so, could I get a motion to approve those minutes?
I propose a resolution to accept the minutes for February the 25th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the claims dated March 10th? And if so, could I get a motion to pay the bills?
I make a motion, we pay the bills, March 10th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We come to the public comments section. And we have a community group, I guess, and we have a spokesperson appointed, Kelly Jordan. Kelly, if you would come to the podium.
Uh, I didn't know I was gonna be spokesperson, I thought we were all gonna speak.
Well, kind of the way this works is if we have a, a group complaint, we need a, a single spokesperson. Uh, we have some meeting rules to keep meetings from going all night. So we have one person that will speak on behalf of the group. And, uh, you know, if, if we could, we could make some concessions and hear two of you or... We, we have a short agenda tonight, so we probably would have time to have two people speak.
We're all here pretty much about our road and the logging company coming out there. And they're, the road is impassable. Like you absolutely cannot get in and out with a car. And my uncle, wherever he is, right there. He had to have a nurse coming out because he just got out of ICU. And the nurse for two days couldn't get out there to give him his, uh, his stuff that he needed to get.
Right.
And some of our neighbors have special needs children. And, I mean, our road needs to be passable.
Right.
And the, the logging company that is out there, the guy that owns it is just rude. And if you try to talk to him, he's just gonna dog cuss you. And then he tells you that, go to his church and they're gonna tell you how, how wonderful he is, right after he dog cusses you. And the county has been doing a lot better about coming out. And actually, they've been working their butts off, coming out and trying to, you know, get the road to where it's passable.
Right.
But as soon as they put material out there, the logging company's just tearing it up. I mean, I have pictures I can show you. Not only are they tearing up our road, but they're throwing trash everywhere. And they're dumping oil, hydraulic oil is everywhere out there. And they're just throwing the, the containers just out in the woods. Um, and, I mean, we just really want our road fixed. My brother's road, you can't even get, right now, you can't get to his house. It's my brother, James, and, um, I'm sorry, David. You can't even get to their house right now.
Well, I, I think that, I, I think we can fix that. I'm not saying fix the road, but we, we can get the road passable. And we, we can ask them to cease and desist. Um, we have that right. I'm a logger, that's what I do, that's not my crew, thank God. But, you know, there are days, these, these guys are in a bad position. And I know y'all understand it, cause everybody knows how much it's rained. Uh, we're, we're up now to 28, almost 29 inches for this year. It rained 40 inches the last two months, last year. Everybody that works outside is struggling to make payments and make bills and all those kinds of things cause their workdays have been limited. That still doesn't excuse the fact that your roads are impassable. So what we, what we can do is, we can ask our, our engineer and our sheriff together to monitor that road and to ask those people not to work when the road is, when it's raining. And we can get that road in a position where you guys can get in, in and out.
They work seven days a week, rain, shine, even the floods, when the flood was there, they were there every day.
And they're, the one boy in the white truck is there till midnight. And I'm not quite sure what loggers do until midnight, but, I mean, he's out there at midnight. So what can a logger be doing?
Right.
What, what can you possibly do at midnight?
We, we've, we log 24 hours a day, our, our company at times. But, um, not everybody does that, there's very few people that do. But we run a night shift at times, and I, I don't know who this is.
We don't either really, we think his name is Bracken, but he's been really rude and...
They drag the logs up down the main road?
Yes, sir.
Well, we, we will address that.
What road numbers are these?
I'm sorry, what?
What road numbers are they?
County Road 199 and 186.
186.
Okay, 186 and 199.
Why can't they hold the logger responsible for tearing the road up?
Right.
It can be.
I mean, you gonna try to talk to them, they just first-class butt-ho. Y'all done all y'all can do to try to keep these roads, they wanna tear them up. Y'all fixing them, they gonna turn them again, and then tell you right quick, you know what you can do? That's what, you know, he tell you what you can do.
Yeah, I, I call them.
They also tore our telephone up at least three times.
Yeah, I got a phone now.
And he has a pacemaker.
That's monitored by the phone. And I went and said something to him about it today, just today. I have water service from a water company that brings water out in five-gallon jugs for my water machine. And they cut me off because the road was inaccessible for them to bring water.
James, am I missing anything?
We, we will get this addressed.
Well, I, I called the police to them week before last. They had left the machine that loads the logs on the trailers. They picked the dry part of the road, and I know why, they didn't wanna get their truck stucked. They parked it in the dry part of the road and left it there from Saturday through Monday. And I got stuck once in the ditch trying to go around the truck out in the road. So I called the Sheriff's Department, and when they come out there, he would only come so far because he was afraid he'd get stuck.
Yeah.
Well, we, we'll work, we'll work through this for y'all.
Well, I feel like something, they should be some way of dealing with it.
Do y'all wanna see the pictures?
I would like to see them, actually.
I did have a word with that guy up there. And I've got a two-wheel-drive truck. I've had that place for 30 years, and I've never had a problem getting in and out. And now, I can't even go down to my own place because I can't get out. And he, his remark was, oh, I said, can't these problems fix this road, I ain't worth it. They'll have to make it passable.
Are you the one that, that, I, I talked to somebody in this...
That'd probably be, on the cell, I sent you a text with his tag number.
Yeah, I mean, I, but the, and I called the engineer, and he did come out there, I think he get where y'all could...
And they tried.
Get in and out at that time, and then they maybe come back and mess it up again.
But what he did, they done tore it up again, I can't come up the hill from my house. I did get out Saturday, I ran up there, but it was about midday. And I put, I've got a diff lock on my truck, and I locked it and was able to get back up the hill. And he was standing up there at the top of the hill when I got out. He said, well, they fixed that road pretty good, I didn't see no rocks hitting the river. I said, duh. You didn't hear me spin all the way up that hill? No? Said, okay.
Well, I understand y'all's point of view, and I understand, you know, when somebody's trying to make their mortgage payment and their bills and all that.
I understand that too.
I, I will personally go out there and talk to them about it, and we, we'll get this straightened out.
Mr. Partey, with your logging company, do you load your trucks and leave your trucks in the Tona County Road and load it with a loader?
Uh, there's times when I back off in the, in the ditch and load them.
Well, it's in the ditch, this is in the middle of the road, and they skid up the middle of the road, and I just...
Shouldn't be doing that.
Well, and they're, they're taking the logs, they're, I mean, you can pick the logs up with that, I don't know what all that stuff's called, but that big, no, the grabby thing. You pick the logs up with the grabby thing, and you put them on the tractor trailer, trailer. But they're actually hooking the logs to the skidder and dragging them down the road. Which is destroying the road, I mean, it's making ruts, my whole tire or my coral falling.
Right.
This is our attorney, Roger, can we not hold them responsible for this road? I mean, they're tearing it up, they're destroying it.
I, I think there's another question here too, and that all is the owner of the property.
The owner of the property is a, um...
I don't know who that is. I don't know who the logging company is.
It's Bracken Logging.
This is, this is not the first time, and it won't be the last time, that we have this problem.
And it's tall, the people that bought the property and that paid the taxes on it this year is Tall Corn Timber? Yeah, Tall Corn Timber out of Atlanta is who paid the taxes on it.
It's an investment company, they borrowed some of the old Hancock property.
And they don't, and they don't, and they don't care.
No, they don't care.
They absolutely don't care. They don't live here, so they don't care. They don't care about y'all, and they don't care about y'all.
It's not them, Alan, they're, they're, they've sold that timber.
Well, they probably don't even know, to be honest, what the timber company is doing. Cause if it was my property and I had a logging company come in, I'd be very upset that they're dumping oil that's gonna run down into the river. I mean, I would be upset that somebody was destroying my property that I'm allowing them to get the trees off of.
Roger, can we not take legal action against these people?
Sure. Sure.
And I, and I think that's what we should do. I mean, this is taxpayers' money that they're, that we're having to go out there and refix and, and work on these roads, and this is just not right.
Is, is any of the road crew here, the people that work there? Oh, is that, man, we really do appreciate y'all, y'all really have been out there busting your humps, and we really do appreciate what y'all are doing. We really do. They've been busting their humps trying to fix that road.
I would just say this, y'all, not every logger is a bad guy. And not every situation is controllable. And there, there are things that, that we do when we've been out of work for two or three weeks that we wouldn't normally do. And, and that's just a function of, you gotta pay bills.
Oh, he ain't been out of work. He's non-stop, seven days, they ain't stopped. Even when that storm came through...
He cut his own way out, or he cut his way in.
But, but they really honestly haven't stopped. If it's storming, whenever those tornadoes were coming in, they're out there just logging, logging, they ain't stopped.
Let me, let me go have a conversation with them. I, I know the son, I don't know the daddy, and this is the daddy's crew. Let me go have a conversation with him, and then we'll address it. What I don't wanna do personally, and we work as a group, so it's a majority vote. But I don't wanna start getting in a situation where we're trying to sue every farmer and every logger in the county for road damage. These guys pay more road tax than, than one of these guys than this whole room combined.
Yeah, but kinda property tax and all that other too, they don't.
Yes, they do. I burn personally, I burn 15,000 gallons of fuel a week. And my tax bill on that would be equivalent to about 250 households a year. Now, I'm not saying this guy, I'm, I'm saying that this, this is not a logging issue. This is a person problem. And what they're doing, they need to pick up and move somewhere where they're not affecting people. That's what we have to do. And there are times when I've torn the roads up. And I take my grader and I go fix the road, and I put rock on the roads, and I do things like that so that my men continue to work, cause most of those guys are islanders.
Well, see, what's crazy is he has a machine sitting there that is fully capable of fixing it, but he just absolutely refuses to do it. He's got a, what's that thing called? Yeah, one of those, he's got one of those sitting there, but he won't use it to, to fix the road.
Either responsibility, that's the county's.
Well, the county can fix that for him.
Fixing something he's told, on purpose. Well, they load them right on the side of the road. When they're in the middle of the road, and they're logging, or they dragging something down the middle of the road, we need to know the thing. So we can come deal, we can't deal with it after the fact.
Yeah, I was actually on the phone with the sheriff when he was talking real ugly to me, and he thought I was lying.
He was on the phone with the sheriff?
I was, he was on his way out, my name's Kelly Jordan.
No, ma'am, I had talked to you.
No, it wasn't you, I was on... No, I'm talking about the sheriff's office. I was on the phone with the sheriff's office, and they were telling me that the officer coming out was having problems. He couldn't get out there because the road was so messed up.
You're probably talking to Communications, like I was telling them the other day.
I don't know who it was.
Call the sheriff's office, do not call Communications, call the sheriff's office, 4698. Because you're gonna talk to dispatchers, and, you know, they may send somebody out there, whatever, I, I don't think...
They sent a guy out there. The guy finally got out there because the, the Mr. Bracken or whatever was being real ugly to me. And he started saying, I'm gonna file a suit against you for harassment and blah, 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 blah. About that time, he saw the blue lights, the guy, I don't know if he got a running start or what. And he saw the blue lights coming up, and then he was like, he quit talking to me like that. And the, but the, the officer that came out there said he couldn't shut them down, he didn't know enough about whatever was going on. And, and there was basically nothing he could do. He did talk to him, but there was nothing that he could do. So, I...
There's nothing we can do, so now, like, broke up.
So, we're go, we're gonna take care of this. We're gonna take care of it. If we have to call a special meeting and pass a resolution to, to do something if I can't handle it personally. But I'm gonna go out there, as a matter of fact, I can call the people that manage Tall Corn and ask them to shut him down until it dries. You know, we, we, there's more than one ways to, way to do this. But, you know, I'm, I deal with the same situation. When the county comes up, wherever I am, and say, you going too far, shut down, I send my men home.
Thank you, sir.
And that's what we have to do, whether we pay our bills or not, cause that's what, being a good neighbor...
That's all we ask, is somebody to, thank you.
Do the right thing, because it's the right thing.
Because your folks are definitely out there trying to fix it, but they can't stay ahead of them, I'm telling you.
Well, we, we will address this, I will go there personally tomorrow and talk to him myself and see, can I get a resolution? And if I can't, then I'll go to the people he's working for.
If he talks to you like he did to me, you won't get a resolution. He told me, and the sheriff's department's out there every day. And I find that hard to believe, that the sheriff department went out there every day, and he's not locked up. I just can't see that.
Well, I understand what's going on. It doesn't make y'all any better, feel any better, but what I, I wanna do for my own sake is I wanna defend the industry that I'm involved in. And we are the largest, as an industry, we are the largest industry in the state of Alabama. The largest industry in Chilton County, the largest employer in the state of Alabama, and the largest employer in Chilton County. So we've gotta work, as an industry, we've gotta work with the citizenry, cause that's where all the, the big part of the jobs are. And we need to be doing a better job, when I'm talking about we, loggers, need to be doing a better job of how we're interacting with the people around us, or we'll wind up with laws passed where we can't do our job, and then the county drives up. So let me go talk to him as one logger to another, and if we can't get a resolution to this, we gotta, we gotta sheriff over here that'll shut him down.
Let me know tomorrow, we'll go talk to him.
Okay.
Call him back, 46755, 4698. Call my chief deputy.
I'd like to carry saying, you know, just, just carry your, your fucking condition, but why they gonna keep coming in six, and they tearing it up? Nine, ten, the other loggers, they gonna come in, upgrade the road, you know, in the afternoon or something, or they'll try to hit you up. These here, they ain't gonna hit you, they don't know that you're tearing it up.
Roger can back me up on this, I think, but what you don't wanna do is start a precedent where you're charging people for use and damage to roads. Cause then, then let's, let's say you're pulling a utility trailer down the road behind your truck, and it comes unhooked and digs into the pavement, cuts a hole in it. You know, maybe this big round, you know, you're not gonna wanna bill for that. There's reason, re, there's things that are reasonable and there are things that are not. And if you continuously deal with it, it's not reasonable. If the county had to come out and fix a little problem and move on and it was done with, I would say that's okay. But if it, you just continuously...
Over and over and over again, if there's four or four...
Yeah, you're right.
You ask them to hit you, and then, they ain't gonna do, they got a skidder that can blade that road just to try to hit people, they, they can tell you right quick. What you gonna do, they will do nothing.
Yeah.
And they tell you right quick too. Why'd you buy them property down here on the river?
Yeah, he did say that, he said, it ain't my fault y'all bought places down here. He did say that.
Well, I, I don't think that... No doubt, and none of y'all are wrong in what you're believing, thinking, feeling, or saying.
When I was hauling there, when they paid me the commission, they paid me to get all the mud and silt out of here in the Lake. Right there, Sawmill Branch.
It washes down the hill, it dills it up.
I'm hauling it out, one of my dump trucks, it come over. Well, the county tells me either, you clean it up, and keep the road passable all time, or we will shut you down.
Yeah.
And I, that should be the same thing.
If you can't get in over there, and they don't haul them, they don't say nothing to them.
Well, then, the large, by and large, most of us are, in some manner or another, we do heavy equipment work, so we know, we know what's going on.
You're not being unreasonable, you're not.
Exactly.
I just have a quick question, you know, with down the grading, it's a little bit off-topic, but my husband and I retired from the power company. And several years ago, we started trying to find out about this grading where there's runoff in the river, like they were talking about, we had to pay to dig it out. We got the power company to work in conjunction with the counties, to put riprap in the ditch going down the hill so it would stop some of the silt. Well, over the years, the riprap has got dug out because the ditches and the turnouts are not being maintained. They're stopped up, so now the ditches are full, and the water runs straight down the hill and straight into the river again. And so, I realize that's a separate issue for all we're here tonight, but I'd like to, again, try to get something knowing with keeping these ditches and turnouts cleared out so that we're not encroaching debris back into the lake.
Right. We had...
It's an environmental issue to have the debris and the dust and the runoff from that road to, it, there's a creek along our property where it dumps it into, and that's what they're talking about, that we spent all this money to have it dredged, to get that out of there. But it's, it's an environmental issue, you don't know what oils or, or toxins, pesticides are being dumped into the lake right there. I found a 360-page document put out by Pennsylvania State Conservative Commission, how to environmentally sensitive maintenance of dirt and gravel roads, that I was going to print out, but I didn't have 360 pieces of paper to do so. But if you would get the road graded properly to keep it from dumping back into the lake and causing an environmental hazard, that would be helpful as well. You know, we don't wanna have a fish kill or, or toxins going into the lake more than already are from areas. But it comes off that road, down a creek, and right into Sawmill Branch, like you said.
Well, two weeks ago, I brought my excavator away and cleaned the pipe out, so it didn't spill through driveway floor.
Yeah.
This started back in 73, the county and the mayor, then I have copies of letters. We went back with A.D.A., and they all blame it on the logger. But then the loggers leave, you know, you have a few years, but it's the silt and the runoff is still what's getting to the, to the river. And then the road grading loosened everything up, and so it's just, it's a vicious cycle.
It is.
Water might spill on this hill, this specific location, about 199, uh, just past 188 where it goes down to water. There, on the left, there's three drains, and on the right, there's two. They grade the road, but the grader fills up, there's nothing going to drill in the drains. So when it rains, everything runs down the road to the low spot, which is where the creek is. Whereas if the drain were maintained, and the riprap was left there like it should've been, then it would drop in the woods, dissipate, and all the solids would fall out, and get into the water going into the lake.
Right.
That's, that's what you got, and the solid is still going right into the water.
Well, this is, this is something that we'll all take under advisement. We'll get with our engineer and try to devise a plan to, to fix some of these issues. And, uh, I'll personally go meet with Mr. Bracken tomorrow. And if I can't get Mr. Bracken to do better, we'll send the sheriff to meet with Mr. Bracken.
Well, I wanna thank you ahead of time.
We, it, it's just being a, a good member...
Well, he'll probably talk to you because you're a logger, so...
Maybe, maybe not, I don't know. I don't know what his financial situation is, and a lot of times that causes stressful people, you know.
Well, the internet says he makes a lot of money.
And what's the chances of getting crusher run or something put on the road instead of they bring loads of dirt out there? Well, then it rains, and then you've got this issue again.
Well, dirt, dirt is a dollar a, a yard, and crusher run is $18.25 a ton. And that's pretty close to equivalent, see, a, a yard and a ton, they're pretty close, so...
So in the end, you don't think the crusher run would hold up if you wouldn't have to keep buying this dirt and...
There's some of both of that. So, so we, our budget up until this year has been fully, fully utilized. There's been not a dime of excess revenue anywhere. So we, we have had tax money come in with the sales tax. And that's the first revenue that we've had above just keeping the lights on in over 20 years. So, so the county has it grown, and we have fixed income tax, you know? You're not growing, inflation grows, and your income stays the same. Well, as, as, inflation will outpace your, your tax base unless your county's growing. So this commission has been actively trying to grow our county for over 10 years now, Alan, right? Uh, we've bring, trying to bring industry, trying to bring housing in here. None of these budgetary problems are gonna be fixed until we can start growing Chilton County. And so this, it's, you know, we, we've got 1,100 miles of road, am I pretty close? Give or take a few, there's about 600 of that that's pavement. Over 80% of that 600 miles is over 30 years old. Our paved roads are in disrepair, our bridges are, we have 50 bridges, 20 bridges that are over 50 years old in the county. So there's been no money to even maintain our infrastructure. So we had the, the sales tax passed this year. We've done a, a $5 million road project, we collected our first tax money in October. We've got a $5 million road project going on. We think this sales tax is gonna bring in somewhere between 3.2 and 3.6 million a year for the county. We've given our sheriff's department a little bit of raise, cause those guys hadn't had a raise in six or seven years. And we've started working on our roads. But just like with a household budget, if your mortgage and your light bill takes up every bit of the money you have, you've gotta, you've gotta either give up something to replace something with, or you've gotta work more hours. Well, we don't have that opportunity to work more hours. So what we've gotta do is grow the county to grow our tax base. It's the only way out of this hole we're in. You know, I could give a million excuses to why we're here, none of that matters, cause that's happened over the last 100 years. But the thing that I can tell you is that you've got a commission sitting up here that was willing to make some moves and take some licks. And, you know, it's, it's cost us. But we, we're doing that to improve the infrastructure in this county, cause it's, it's in disrepair countywide. Y'all, you, you know, if, if, if I, if we allotted the amount of time as commissioners that are spent dealing with road issues and road complaints versus everything else we do, the roads are 95, 97% of our time, it's half of the county budget. And it's the biggest problem that we have in the county. And all I can tell y'all is, and it, it doesn't change your feelings any, cause it's a long-term project. But it's gonna take five to 10 years to even get our road system in a position where we can just start doing maintenance, cause we're so far behind. Up till Alan mentioned the other day, up until when he was elected, it had been over 10 years since there was any, uh, uh, resurfacing of county roads. And we've done over 100 miles since Alan was, was, how long have you been here, Alan, 13 years? We've done over 100 miles, well, up until this year, we had about 400,000, or it was right at 500,000. We've done over a hundred miles, well, up until this year, we had about four hundred thousand, or it was right at five hundred thousand of, of money that came in every year that was allocated to resurfacing. If we use that money on a, on a project that required state and federal guidelines, it was costing us over four hundred thousand dollars per mile. And we had five hundred thousand dollars in our budget for resurfacing. So, I'm telling you that just to give you an idea of how far behind we are. If it was a matter of us being able to afford it, we'd put rock on every road in the county.
What sand and peat gravel makes a good road, if keep them off of it when it's wet like it is, I mean, it makes, it'd make a fine road.
Yeah. We bought, we bought that, uh, the, the sand and peat gravel from a, uh, uh, sand plant in Jimson that had gone out of business, and that was their waste material. So, we've bought it for essentially nothing, and our hopes are that over time, as we cycle it into the road, it'll create a base and a chart of its own in places that doesn't have natural chart. But we're trying, I, I promise we're trying, that doesn't change the.
You just can't beat, beat the process when somebody's continuing tearing it up.
There, no doubt.
Well, I tell you what I.
I, I have no complaints with y'all not trying to keep it up, and trying to.
I tell you what I'll do, I tell you what I'll do, I'll give Joseph this opportunity to go out there and talk to him, and at the next meeting, I'll make a motion. If he don't do, if he don't get some results, I'll make a motion that we file a suit against him, I may not get a second, but I'm gonna make that motion.
Is there any way that, because I know that the road department has spent, uh, you know, a lot of money in the last month or two, I don't even know how long. Is there not a way that you can make him, cause it's his fault the road screwed up like that?
That's what, that's what I plan on doing.
Can he not give them their money back? I mean, can y'all not make him pay for all this?
You'd have to sue him, and once you sue him, you got precedent that everybody's gonna get sued.
Well, maybe that way, that way they'll get some results from stopping the roads up.
If you go near another county and tear the roads up like that, you're responsible for it.
It's not, it's not really any different.
The lady at the road department said, when I called, um, about the, the first, when I first called, she said that, um, that they voted on it at a commission meeting to either hold the logging companies liable or not, and that I, I don't, nobody showed up at the meeting, so.
That's not accurate, there was a, there's a piece of legislation that, that is in Montgomery that if a county adopts it, will require a logger to notify the engineer of who he is when he starts a job. That's all it says.
Um, is there any way to figure out when they're gonna be gone, when are they gonna get out of there? No idea, is there anybody at the, that we could ask, cause God forbid I try to ask him.
I, I, I need to get your phone number and let me follow up and call you guys.
Are you coming out there tomorrow?
I'm gonna come out there.
If you go to the end of one ninety-nine, that's me, you either run into my road, my house, or the river.
Okay.
I'm at the end of one ninety-nine.
Okay, all right, I'll be out there.
But I mean, I'll give you my number, I'll, it's two eight three.
No, don't do that in public.
Oh, okay. Well, I know we're almost over.
I know, but we're on YouTube.